And it, it has several things on it that I feel like we need to discuss and try to get some things figured out with. Uh, all the different ones that are on here, they're all important, they're all needed. But the only big problem is they're all very expensive. And, and that's where we are. Uh, let's go ahead and get started with the first one, item one, which is the paving. Uh, the paving is something that has been looked at for Deerfield for several years. And as far as a priority, it continued to get pushed back because, well, there's other things that popped up that, that jumped into the need. Uh, mainly what we have at, at Deerfield, if you've not seen it and, and you may have been out there, is as you pull in, there's a, a really bad patch area. Then as soon as you turn to the right, there's several different places that has, uh, the, the paving just has, has failed. Um, I went ahead and got a, now I skipped, went straight to B and I apologize for that, but with, uh, I brought in Steve Moran with Rogers Group. He's looked at it. Uh, he, he's, he, he's dealt with this stuff on a regular basis over the years. Uh, I want to get his opinion on it. And the, the first thing that we looked at was doing the entire area that is, is starting to give away some. And, and the price is gonna, it's gonna be basically, he, he suggested going down about five to six inches, excavating it or milling it out. Apparently the milling machine will work in a way that you can actually mill down five or six inches. And it, it works really well with it, whereas excavation is, is I think both of you know, um, you're, you're tearing up the entire area and making a pretty big mess with it. Um, when he looked at it, he gave me some budgetary numbers. These, uh, his budgetary numbers were around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do those areas. Uh, with knowing that we also have the high school back parking lot area that's gonna need to be done. I, I, I told him, I said, I'm, I'm thinking that we're gonna be struggling for, for the funds to, to get all that done. Um, so we, we localized it and looked at it a little closer to the areas that have completely given away. And we have the large potholes that's coming in and it's, it's broken down. And, and my way has always been this. If I can't do it right, don't do it at all. It, it's just, it's nonsense too. Um, the other thing I've always said is if I can't do the entire job, don't, don't start the job either. The thing is, we have areas that are given away that if we localize and just do those spots, we would be able to fix them completely, those spots, the way that they're supposed to. Now, five years from now, you might move over ten, fifteen, twenty feet and might give away again. But the areas that we actually put our money into would be repaired and repaired correctly. Um, and whenever they got done looking and, and measuring and came up to measure, they came up with a, a budgetary number of approximately fifty thousand dollars. Which I think is a little bit more doable for us unless the board decides they want to try to go the entire thing and, and do all of it. Um, but that's, that's what we were looking at whenever I brought them out and, and we were going through it. Uh, the other one, not only Steve Moran's helping me out on this, also Kenny Sadler's helping me on it as well. So that's kind of what I was looking at with the Deerfield, with the paving. Um, and also with Deerfield and also the high school. If, if we decide that this is the direction we want to go, which I, I really strongly believe on this one, that it needs to be. I could get it in the paper because we've been working on things, getting it together for a while now, because we hoped to do it last year. Um, but I could get in the paper actually next week and we can move forward with it. Do you have any questions about Deerfield? Then we will go to the high school on it.
Was your, you said an additional fifty to a hundred and fifty to cut down out there, because that's what they're gonna have to do there. I mean, they patched it ten times probably since Deerfield was built, those potholes, and it's all subgrade. So until they fix the subgrade, we all know that. Until they fix the subgrade, these potholes will keep coming back.
I mean, it was, it was a mud hole whenever they built out there anyway, so.
The, the areas that-
It's, it's on about five foot of shot rock, but still.
Right now, right now, the only place that, there's only been one patch area and that's, as soon as you turn in, there's a patch area that I want to say it's twelve by twelve, fifteen by fifteen. It's not real large. Um, they cut it and, and patched it in. The other areas that have given away, we have gone in and, I mean, it's screw and, and put hot mix on a regular basis or put gravel. That's not, that's not a repair.
Get out there and get up out of the floorboard if you didn't remember that few of it.
I mean, some, some of them are-
Get your wits about yourself, pull on around through there, you know, and, and then we patch them and we, we're right back.
Did Steve say he was gonna undercut it? How much did he say he's gonna undercut it?
Okay, if, if he, now, what we put into it, now, of course, it would have to go out the bed. Uh, it would be approximately, I think it was, I don't, I didn't bring that form in here with me, five to six inches. So they, they would actually mill down five to six inches. They would actually put a bridge substance that will hold up to it. And then go above it with the, the paving on top of it. So it's a hundred-
I don't know that five inches is gonna be deep enough.
Well, that's, that's what they got going on because they're on that five inch, or five foot of shot rock. And even no matter what they do, it's still working its way through that shot rock.
Yeah.
And it'll do that for years.
Is he, is he gonna put some fabric down before?
I believe it did include fabric. I'd have to look to see.
You need to put some fabric down for that.
I, I, I let them do their, their job. I, 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 I go completely. So what he has given me is what I would be going with, uh, on it. And, but ultimately, he felt like if we could dig down, dig, how do you say it? We could dig China. And, and put all the rock you want in it, but it's not gonna take care of it until we actually bridge over the, the problem areas. And he, he gave me some examples that was out in A Row that they had to do, that they had to bridge over it so that it won't give and then it actually will hold. Um, but yes, this is spot fixing. Um, with doing some, um, a sealant on top of parts of it to try to help in, in prolong problems that can come up. I mean, there's what they call alligatoring going on out there, but, but either we, we go in there and, and we fix it right or we don't. It's just the amount of money we have to go and do the entire job or just do the spot.
Man, we go in there and put some flowable fill down. If those, if those one spots are continuously going, the ones that's going bad, we can go in there and put some flowable fill down. But I mean, you go, you can spend as much money as you want and try to fix it.
That's exactly what he said. He said, how much money do you want to throw into this?
Yeah. I mean, and until you put something down to keep it from going through that shot rock.
Yeah, those spots that he, that's in question right now, they've been there since, within a year after the school was built, starting.
Right.
Yeah, I think I know which one you're talking about and that's the same ones that, I mean, until you go in there and put some concrete down or flowable fill or something and then seal that to keep that from keep going down, like Robert said, to keep it going through that shot rock, it's not gonna-
Well, and that's what he's saying. You bridge over it. So then it's not going down anymore. You, you've, you've got a bridge so that it doesn't give.
Area is if you do this area right here and bridge over and take care of these spots and these holes, well, then next thing you know, you've moved it to here.
And it will.
Because that's where all your penetration water penetrates.
Over time, over time it will. Uh, it's just how much do we want to go? It's either doing the, the fixes of where we got the problems or going in and really throwing the money into it to, to do the whole thing.
Definitely have to shoot it to the board to consider at least patching damaged spots that are there because of the realignment bills we're getting on buses and-
Well, I-
I know that was an issue though, talking about the buses hitting them and stuff and people and everything else just hitting them.
Well, I mean, there, there are still holes there, but they're not, they're not just awful right now.
I've seen a bumper come off.
We, we've been patching them, we've been patching them, gosh, five years I've been up here, we've, we've been patching on a regular basis. And they, I mean, a patch is a patch. It's, if it's truly just a throw patch, what I'm wanting to do is not just patch, it's repair. But it's gonna be just those spots.
As long as we don't see what we see on Highway fifty-five where they always put brand new beautiful asphalt, smooth all the way through past the high school. Then they'll come through and forget that they didn't put in a few lines and drains and tiles and cut it.
What is their budget for out there to fix that?
Well, what I was looking at was around fifty thousand dollars to, to repair that. If we tried to go the entire thing, we're looking at upwards of a hundred and fifty.
But that, I mean, when I rode out there and looked at it, I mean, that's pretty much the, that's the worst spot is where you turn in right there, isn't it?
Well, there's, there's a spot, no, there's actually the, where you, you turn in, then you go up and you turn to the right.
Yeah.
And there's several spots there that's pretty bad. Then actually when you're leaving the, the, the parking lot, there's a big spot over on the right side there as well. Now, that's the one that would used to really rattle your teeth. It is, it's pretty bad. But we've, we've got it filled. It's just, it's not gonna hold. There's nothing there to, to make it hold.
Right, yeah.
So what do y'all think about just moving forward with getting bids on this and, uh, taking it to the board for repair?
Yeah, I, I think so. And then let's, let, get some type of itemized how he's gonna do it if he's gonna put down fabric.
Tighter number.
Yeah.
What, oh, it's gonna be, I mean, they're gonna have to bid exactly.
Yeah, I'm saying a little bit tighter number than that to get to the board and then let the board decide on a full or a partial.
I gotta go through the bidding process to get that, so.
Right.
But if we don't want to go that direction, I don't need to go through the bidding process.
That's gotta, something's gotta be, something's-
It's one of those things that needs to be fixed.
But we need to, we need to tell Steve what we want to have done though. I mean, what, if we're gonna have-
I, I've got a bid sheet.
Yeah.
I, I've got a bid sheet. I've got a spec sheet, the full packet to, to hand out.
I mean, we can, do we want to go through the putting down flowable fill or fabric? You know, we need to know about stuff like that if we're gonna put it, if that's what we're gonna ask him to bid on. You see what I'm saying?
But I brought him out. That's what I'm saying. I brought him out. He actually came up with what is needed there.
Okay.
To take care of it. And he's put it all on this bid, bid sheet for me so that I can send it out and get bids from whoever wants to bid on it. That, that doesn't mean Rogers Group would get it, but the same job would get done.
Right. And I think what he's getting at is possibly he or we could take a peek at what he's come up with that he wants to fix it with.
Be glad for you to.
Yeah, we need to come up with that, so that we know, he'll, we'll know what we're, he's bidding on. I mean, you can just have five people go out there and bid on it. They'll be bidding on something different.
No, that they, it's, it actually outlines what they'll be bidding on.
Okay.
He just, I think you can't recall if it was actual fabric or-
I can't tell you exactly what, I could go and get the sheet and show it to you.
That would have helped to have the sheet with us today so we would know what we're, what we're talking about. So, yeah, that would have been a big help to know what we're talking about.
My goal is, is do we want to move that direction or not?
I, I think so.
That's, that's what this meeting's about.
Okay.
Okay, so yes, on, uh, Deerfield, we will, I will start that out. The other thing is whenever I do paving, I try to do, if I could do more of it at one time. And we've got another one at the high school and that's the back drive and parking that includes drainage. Uh, I was able to show that to the board during the fall retreat. It's all around the new CTE building. Basically from the softball, it won't be the actual part that's really good drive or pavement still there, that would get sealed. But then from almost a corner all the way around to the teacher parking that's back in the left. Then it cuts back to the right and goes around the CTE buildings and goes up to the, uh, the circle that's up there. They'd be drainage and parking or paving and as, as well as the lines. So it would include every bit of that. And we're talking, and I don't have a budget number on it. So I, I have no clue where we're going on it. I don't know what I'm gonna get. Uh, but it's, if you saw what it was the other day, you could tell something needs to be done. It's, it's in pretty rough shape there.
Coal mix and it held up a long time. Coal mix is usually, if you do it right, sometimes it's better than asphalt, but.
Well, it, it's got the coal mix and, and it has done very well. But if you've ever been back there when we have a, a really large drain and Mr. Coach McQuarrie could probably tell you about the softball. It, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a pond almost, isn't it? So what we're hoping to do is, is get drainage, get the water out because we also know that water is the damage to pave. So if we don't take care of the water, there's no really reason to pave it. So what I'm hoping to do is, is do both. Uh, I know it's gonna be a big ticket item, but it needs to be done.
Uh, it doesn't hurt to get bids anyways. I mean, ultimately the board-
They, they decide.
Decides to spend it and do it or not, but you're still gonna have to have a number.
So what I've done is I've got a bid packet that includes for two bids. One is for the high school and one's for Deerfield. And I'll, I'll send that out, try to get that ball rolling. The plan is for it to come back in on the thirty-first of October. Uh, after that, can look at it and put it on the agenda for the October board meeting. Sorry, the November board meeting. And, um, then y'all, the, the board can make a decision from that if they want to move forward or not.
Now, you said something about the day when we were over there about keeping that strip that's through there that's already asphalted.
Yes.
That's gonna be hard to do, I think, and they, and have drainage, Kevin.
Everything work out right.
Try to get it to blend in because whenever we, we asphalted that when we did it in front of the heating facility, all of that, all of that through there, sorry. All of that through there is, uh, will have to be done. You know, so.
Well, whenever I went out there with, uh, Kenny Sadler, he looked at it once again. I, I'm, I'm about aesthetics after we get it, you know, the, first of all, it's, it's repair. Then it's aesthetics, but then it also comes to money. Uh, when we looked at it, my goal was to, to go through and completely pave all of it. And you're talking about a really nice looking area. Uh, he questioned, is, is this getting ready to get costly? So I'm trying to back off a little bit and save us a little bit of money where we can that is already good. And as we looked at it, he was right. There's, there's not anything there that, um, this alligatoring like, uh, Deerfield is, uh, we can seal it, uh, after we, we paved the other, go in and seal it. We, we did the same thing on the teacher parking lot. We had it all paved except for the little drive that came in. We had it sealed. And truly the sealing actually lasted better than the paving on, on the color. Um, I, I think it's gonna look fine. If we decide that we want to go ahead and pave the entire thing, then it's gonna also require milling because you're gonna get it too high. By leaving it there, we're not too high and we'll, we'll feather out with it. But if we decide that we want to pave it, then we have to take it off to be able to put that in. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, so-
If you, if you go over there and, and, and shoot that, the elevations on that, Kevin, where we, when y'all, when we built the building there and Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, the only way that we, the only way we've got water to go out there because I've shot this before is back toward the drain between the heating facility and Brandon's field. If you're not careful, we'll dump every bit of that water on Brandon's softball field.
Well, we, it's, it's all been shot. North Coast has been out there and they shot-
About half of it to go over by the criminal justice school, dead animal lab. And into the drain that runs right down the fence there of the landfill.
The, the whole area's been shot. It, it's part of the, the document showing the elevations, what the elevations have to be. Uh, Mr. Sadler's the one that actually drew every bit of this up, showing where the drainage goes, where the sheet drainage is gonna be taking place. Uh, where the, the block, uh, for the bleachers were put in so they would be actually paved right up to that, uh, line. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, if you want to change the whole thing, we can. It's just, it's all set up.
It's, it'll have to be. I mean, it's not gonna get through all of it.
You don't have the one place to drain it too. And that's that, the ditch right there behind, between the heating facility and the softball field.
There, there's another drainage.
Storm drain on the backside of the first CTE building in between that school building and-
But that's way back on the other side though, isn't it?
No, there's a, there's a, uh, sewer drain there. Sewer drain in that area because it takes a lot of the gutter water and takes it to the ditch out toward the gym. The ditch that goes over to landfill on the front of old Mount Greg Wing.
There's also-
Multiple ways to try to help.
And, and they'll be putting in drainage as well. So the whole, it'd be tying into the drainage that's there that actually takes you to the other side of the softball field, uh, on the visitor side. It, it actually goes into a drain there as well and those would be connected.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna gain, I don't think you'll gain any more water coming to that ditch than what's already doing. Because it don't go through the softball field now, it comes down to that ditch anyway.
Right. But that, but that building right there is gonna take, yeah. That building right there is gonna cut out. You got to go around it one way or the other.
Yeah, you can split it. Come around one end and the other end, you know, fifty, seventy-five feet just to cover what's coming off this building.
Either way, I was going off of Kenny Sadler, his drawings and the elevations and, I mean, he, he's, he's the engineer to take care of this type of stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm trusting in his, his knowledge. Uh, are y'all good with continuing to move forward with, uh, the bids on that?
I think so.
And I think you're gonna need a, you're gonna need a bid anyways just for the board to have something to consider.
Oh, you, you gotta have a bid before you, uh, but, but if this committee says we don't want this and we don't see the need of it, then that, there's no reason for me to even go and get a bid.
No, I think we need it. Everybody's seen we need, needed to be.
We need that.
Okay.
Bring Fred up to face with what we're talking about. We're talking about paving behind the CTE building there is what we're talking about now.
What I had shown y'all at the, the fall retreat.
Yes.
You remember?
That's what we were talking about.
Okay.
No, we ain't getting to that just yet.
That's okay. Okay, any questions on paving? Fred, did you have any questions?
No, I, I know what you're talking about because we, you know, we looked at it the other day at the retreat.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the lighting. Okay, last year, or last year, last school year, at the, the end of the year, uh, there were some funds that, um, were getting ready to be moved into fund balance, unassigned fund balance if we didn't do anything with them. Um, the, the amount was-
One point eight or something like that.
Uh, no, it wasn't one point eight. It was like one point two. Thought I had it here. I, I apologize. No, one point three. Uh, there was one point four, uh, one hundred thousand of it was to go towards track on getting things upgraded at the track. So it's one point three. We discussed it at that time, looking at doing lighting at our athletic fields at all schools. Um, the, the reason why we're looking at this or it came up, uh, two or three different reasons. One thing is some of the lighting is, is starting to get some age on it. Uh, so you're starting to have some, some lights go out more often. Uh, if the lights go out, and this happened about four years ago at one of the football games, uh, the lights go off at, at any of our fields. They all are gas lights and it takes about fifteen, twenty minutes for them to cool down. And then slowly start turning them back on and they'll start coming back on. So if we have, uh, outage during a graduation, uh, a, a baseball, softball game, or any of them, it just takes a long time and the safety's just not there. Um, as well as it will create a much safer, sorry, a better playing surface for all of our athletes. Uh, and I talk about soccer, every, I, I listed all of them. So it'd be a football field. Uh, put down lights only because they have, I think they have concrete poles instead of metal poles, but they might be metal. So all they need is the lights. The softball field at the high school, in the baseball field at the high school, they both have, uh, wood poles. And to fix those, it's gonna require putting new poles up as well as new conduit because it's not, this is not where it needs to be. And in lights, so it is a big job. Uh, Raider Academy, the soccer field, which it has, I think, metal poles. So all it would need is the lights. Uh, the soccer field at the middle school. And it has nothing as of right now, so it would need poles, electricity, conduit and lights. Uh, so it's a fairly large project. And I want to say with the soccer field, getting electric back there to that area, for whatever reason, wherever the middle school was built and those, those fields, there was not really enough electric, electricity put back there to take care of future needs. And, and I think even wherever the, the facility was built, they brought Peter Pay Paul type setup to, to make things work.
There's power back there.
There's power back there. But, but it was, it was really pushing to, to get what we needed. So this would be actually putting a transformer, pulling the power from, uh, fifty-three, getting it back there where those athletic fields are. Put a transformer so that it will take care of the soccer field and can pull some of these other things off so that it's, it's not maxed out.
It's, it's not maxed out.
Okay.
Because I put the building back there and know all about that power. At first, they wanted to pull the power. If it's gonna pull any more power back there, there is a rightway. The school system owns a rightway and easement that goes from the back corner down there below football field. And goes to old Woodbury Highway. And that's how they wanted to bring the power was through there instead of fifty-five. So then we don't have to get into a lot of trenching, digging, piping, conduiting, all of that. We can actually bring it in aerial, really. When, when we finished the building, if I'm not mistaken, everybody had to agree and it was noted on there, there is enough power to light one of them fields. But you couldn't do football and-
If you want to answer anything, because you might know more about it, you need to be on the microphone. Okay, we, we had, we had actually met out with, uh-
There was three faves down there in Lawson Electric who done it all.
We, we had met out there with C and H and they were thinking that a transformer would be needed and pull more power back to that area to take care of this and also any future needs.
Well, they gotta also con- consider that, you know, when we were doing all of our ratings and everything was still good there, they were still using the old incandescent halogen lights. Where we're talking about LED, I'm most certain here, right?
It, it is LED and, and I did ask them that. He said it's, it's not gonna make that much difference with it. But once again, um, I've got to rely on them. Uh, but that's, that's the reason why for the middle school would need, C and H, contractors, Hirschman's. Uh, then softball field and baseball field, it would be upgrading them to the LED lights. Also the, uh, Raider Academy, it'd be the tennis courts there. And it, it would require lights and possibly poles because I'm not sure if the poles could handle, uh, the LED, LED lights. But possibility, I'm not sure on that one. So I, I went ahead and I reached out to Mus- Musco Lighting and got some information from them. Now, this does not include the tennis courts at Raider Academy and does not include getting power back if we need more power to behind middle school, does not include that. They gave me a price of one point three, one five. So one million, three hundred fifteen thousand dollars for, uh, a budgetary number. Uh, Musco is a very, very well-known and they are also a cooperative that we could, could purchase actually through the cooperative, uh, for the lights. But they do have a very good warranty as well, but, but that's a, something to look at. We did set aside, like I said, one point three and, and these are budgetary numbers, so it could be more, it could be less. But we didn't include those two other things, okay? Are there any questions on, on the lighting? And, and there might be questions also for our ADs as well.
I think, uh, there's a capital improvements of the school system here. I think that everything, all of this is a necessity. Easier to maintain, longevity's a lot more. Uh, I think the soccer field at the middle school is something that's going to be a no-brainer and gonna have to happen. You know, there was, I think that the actual reason that those lights was pulled out of the building project to begin with is because they ended up at Cal County Raider Academy over a Title IX issue. And one could say this is a Title IX issue back at CCMS as well. But that's neither here nor there. It still needs to happen. I think, you know, that's, that's-
The, the other thing with- The, the other thing with, if we did all of these, it takes care of our Title IX situations.
Period.
Of doing one field but not another field.
There you go.
Why are you giving one more than the other? If we did all of them, and, and the funds that we have, back when it was transferred and, and, and it was voted by the board to move them, that was the purpose, and the reason why was because this is probably a one-time deal that we can, can make this happen, and boom, we, we, we take care of the whole thing, but it would take, of course, buying the lights, hiring somebody to come in, electricians, to, to take care of the, the install and everything, so.
You're probably looking at two hundred thousand dollars of new money, is that the way I'm, is that the way you're picking up on it? Over what was already appropriated?
It could be, it could be.
Because I, I know there were, were some of the users of these fields that were interested in, cause we all know with the LED light packages, all, just about all the schools that have updated to that have the means of tying it in with their sound and stuff of that for sound, lighting, lighting effects and things. I think, uh, y'all could, Matt could enlighten me a little more on that. But that may be something where the teams or boosters could step in, if there was additional.
Well, I agree with you. I, I think that, that would make sense, cause it, it actually comes up that you can do the color, colored lighting, and, and you could do the strobes, you could do all this fancy stuff. I think it's the, the place of our district to take care of the, the basic needs of what it is. If they wanna add to it, then they put in to take care of the up, up charge, but.
And I just wanted to throw that out there.
That ain't gonna be free though.
No, no, absolutely not.
That, that ain't gonna be no bonus prize, I mean, that's gonna be, I mean, that's gonna be a bonus prize, but it's gonna be.
But what I'm saying is, we, I feel like the system needs to make sure that adequacy is there, and, and nice.
Lights, poles, and electricity in the system.
But if you go, if you start doing the flashers and everything else.
Teams, boosters.
That's kind of a.
That's a, that's a whole nother schedule, that's a whole nother conversation there.
So.
I guess what you're saying is, we, we would provide the base and essential, uh, for somebody who wanted to.
Like, like, I'll, I'll use.
Provide additional money for the extra.
I'll use the football stadium, for example. You know, there's already poles there, we're only talking about changing the lights to the LED lights. Well, if it was a five thousand dollar upgrade for the whole stadium, just to go from white light to ability of colored, and, and a, and a control box over here that, that ties in with the music, that way they flash and strobe differently with the way the music playing or whatever, things of that nature, that's on the club or the team. As far as the hardware, what the system is putting in, they'll withstand, that's what they're designed for, that's what they're built for, and it's, you know, it's not adding nothing to what the system's having paid for, it's just adding to the show that whichever sport or booster wanted to. Liven it up. Improve it, yes.
Uh, C and H are aware of that easement arc, because that's very important, because that's really, one reason that was there for utilities in the future, and, uh, that makes a big difference.
It, it was told to them that day, whenever I met with them.
Coming from that other road might be a lot less costly.
It might be cheaper. Ultimately, it comes down to which is the cheapest and best route.
Well, once, once it comes down to it, and what it come down to then was Duck River, Duck River said, no, if you bring power back here, that's how it's coming.
And, and that might very well be it, so that's still to be decided type things.
That was a nightmare.
But the question is, do we, as far as the, the paving and this, little bit, got the funds somewhat, not completely, but there might be a little bit that we have to put in more to it, but a lot of the funds are already there for it. Do y'all want me to start moving forward with getting bids? Cause this, this isn't a bid, this is budgetary numbers that Musco gave to me.
And we already approved this anyways back in the spring.
It, no, it was only approved to move the money over into capital outlay.
With this intention.
So that we could use it with this intention, but, but it was not approved to, to do it, so.
No, no, as far as, as far as being approved, hey, we're putting lights up, no.
Correct.
That's not the, no. It was appropriated and moved.
With this in mind.
With this intention.
Correct. But do y'all want me to, to continue to move forward with this one? Because it's, it's a lot of money.
I think that's why we have all these folks here today, right?
They, they're here because there, there is several things, and they can tell you the, the reasons why, and, and the, the benefits, and, and the reason why they need it, basically.
Who's first?
If, if you got anything you wanna share.
The way I look at it, always come up here, the way I look at it, the money was put there for this purpose, and this is what we're doing.
Okay.
You know, if, if that's what.
I don't, I don't know if there's any much more say, cause I think, you know, uh, when I talked to the Hirschmans, uh, last spring, uh, we have a, a light on their softball field, in the right field, it's behind that fence that we put up. Anything that's on the left side of that pole, those lights can't be replaced unless they put their truck on my field, which would tear my field up. So I have two lights out that I can't get replaced, because they can't get to them because of that fence. Um, and so when I talked to him, um, he had, he had mentioned the LED lights, and kinda said that they're, they were out of that business of the lights that we have now. They have what they have, uh, but once they run, once, once they run out, they were gonna have to special order those lights, which is gonna cost us more money. Uh, and so that's when I kinda asked about LED lights, and he, he kinda told me about, that's the better route to go. Uh, so that was my conversation with the Hirschmans about that. Um, my thing is, if I have two lights out, once four lights go out, I'm gonna have a dead spot in my outfield. Uh, and once again, they, they can replace them, but it's gonna cost me money to fix my field, because I gotta put the truck on the field to replace them. Um, so that's kinda where I'm at with that, I know that's a little selfish of me, me the softball coach, but as, as far as athletics, I think it's, we have some poles that are old, I mean, baseball and softball poles have been there since they built, and they're wooden. Um, you know, it, it's a, it'll be a nice upgrade for all of our athletics, middle school and high school combined, to have that upgrade.
I know the, the stadium, I think, has seven.
Football, yeah, football has quite a few out too, um.
I've brought crane out there and blew people up and everything, and they're not gonna play.
So really, I mean, they've got to be replaced, you know, if they like.
Yeah, we, we replace, every field usually replaces at least one, I know sock, the soccer field replaced like six last year. Um, so every year, we have to keep going up there and replacing those lights, um, on some field, mostly all, all fields, at least one of them has to be replaced every year.
So you're saying that to replace them, it's gonna tear your field up, or?
On my field, the right field, uh, lights, because it's behind the fence that we have at the high school, they can't get to it outside the fence. They would have to drive onto my field to replace those lights. Uh, just, just that one pole, the rest of the poles I can get to, because all on this side of the fence. Uh, but for that one pole, there's eight lights, uh, the four on the left, well, they would have to get onto my field with their trucks and to get up there to replace them.
I bet I could swing them back there for free.
I'm sure.
I mean, it's gotta be done, doesn't it?
Well, right now, we're okay, like, right now, as long as I, I don't have two lights out, as long as those only two are out, I don't have a dead spot, yet. Um, now, if we got the four of them out, I would have, we would have to figure something out, cause my outfield wouldn't have a little dead spot. Um, obviously, if we get LED lights, that won't be a problem, the replacement, we'll be good.
So this would take care of that?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Well, hopefully, if this is done, there won't be an issue of getting to the lights, because that, to me, that, that should've been in the plan to begin with, how you're gonna replace them, because you always have to eventually replace lights.
And, and even these, eventually, you're gonna have to work on them, but it will prolong things much longer, a whole lot longer.
But what I was saying, there needs to be a plan in place of how you would change the lights without tearing up the field.
Well, I think that if we get the, if we go with the LED lights, they can move those inside that fence, and with LED lights, it'll be a little brighter, so it's gonna cover more of the outfield.
You won't have that issue.
So I won't have that issue, it won't be behind the fence anymore, yep.
I believe some of those lights too, you can let down with a cable too and change them out.
I don't know either that.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Some of our, our lights?
No, these new lights, if you put new lights out.
Oh, I got you, I'm with you now.
Yeah, the new lights.
I, I thought you saw with the old ones.
You won't have to get a truck back there, again, because they'll let down with a cable, the whole lights structure lets down. You change the light bulbs out, you raise it back up.
And, and they do that, also adjusting, they're painting the neck to adjust, and, you know.
Because if they, if they move that easy, then you kinda wonder if they're gonna, wind's gonna move them some, even.
No, they.
No.
They, they lock in for the.
They're stationary, I mean, they're, they're locked in, but they're just, they're on a cable, and they're on track, when you let them down, that's what they're made for in places like this.
Okay.
And I can't.
Let them down, they're on track, you replace them.
Which I would say they would only be dealing with putting up new poles as well, cause it'd probably be hard to retrofit, maybe not, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think, like, at the stadium, I don't think you're gonna, I think you're just gonna use the same poles, and you're gonna put the lights up there, and I mean.
Even if we had to replace that one pole, just so that we don't have to get back there.
Right, right.
And I can't say.
Well, the, the baseball and softball has to get new poles.
Yeah, right, right, anyway, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, so you're good.
But y'all talked about the example, uh, it was two or three years ago, in, in the middle of a football game, uh, the lights went out.
It was about four, yeah.
And I had to call Shay, and, and my response was, it'll be about thirty minute delay.
It was actually forty-five, yeah.
Yeah, and it lasted longer than thirty minutes.
That was a rough time.
Uh, they had to get it fixed first, and then get it back on, uh, so that has happened in the middle of a football game, um.
Yeah, I was, I was.
As an A D, it was, it's not fun.
That's, that's when we figured out how to turn a white bright screen on the Jumbo Tron.
We did, we turned that on to get his light, yeah.
And it, man, it just lit everything, everybody could not fall down steps then.
Yeah, I got a call, and they're out, by the time I got there, they finally started coming on, so it is the amount of time, it's. So that's the reason why we're trying to move away from it. Okay, so are y'all good? Anybody else wanna talk?
My only comment was a joke, I just wanna say, we looked into Musco's pitch and that, of course.
Mister, Mister Harris, you got something to say?
I, I guess the only thing I'm gonna say is, uh, two things on our lights on our field, we have a, when I'm, call it personal or whatever, we have a brand new facility that was given to us, school, fields, everything, and before we ever opened the doors, the lights were taken from us. And I guess I've kinda had a fur under my saddle ever since then, we need lots, it's not fair. Um, the second part is, when it comes to spring boy soccer, until time changes, they can't play at our field, because by, it gets dark so quick, they're having to set their schedule up to play away games the first half of the year, until time changes, and then we're stacked up with a bunch of home games at the end, so this will help on that one. I just think it's fair, I think we need lots on that side.
And, and we have had some, some parents calling about JV not being able to play, because it gets dark and they have to close down games, and so their JV teams are, are missing out as well.
It's not fair to the younger kids.
Right.
Not, I mean, aside from the fact that you have to have JV to get a better varsity program the next year, it's not fair to those kids to put the time in, and practice and never get the point.
We're gonna take care of our athletics, right?
Okay, so I'm hearing everybody say, go ahead and move forward with getting bids.
I agree.
On, on all of it?
We're gonna have sports, we're gonna have lights, that's always bothered me.
Okay.
One, one question on, on that, is the only, the only place that would not have lights in Cal County school system then, that athletics participate on would be the football field at middle school then, right?
But you're talking about, it's the practice football field at middle school, right?
Yes, I think there had been a hope, but I think that, that could be outside the system, if there was something there, we might, you might.
I think we need to look at all of it.
Obviously, you said it a while ago about making sure there was enough opportunity for enough power back there to do other things.
In the future.
In the future.
And I think we need to look at all of it, what we're doing, I mean, I, you know, we just, we just piecemeal things, things like.
If you want me to add a whole nother field on?
For what, what I'd like to see is what the cost of it would be, because we supposedly have so much money sitting out there, maybe.
You could, I know what you're saying.
I mean, you could look at this.
You could do the bid with.
I mean, I'm not saying do that with this, but at least know what it would cost.
Add another one for that field, and then when we approve, if we approve.
Okay, one, one of the things I told, uh, Mister Harris when we were talking about it, is get the electric back there, that's something that might happen in the future, if the need comes.
That field was built originally, it's crowned, it's sodded, has field goals, it was built with the intentions that eventually gained.
Right, exactly.
Uh, and there's a lot of work and money that has to go into it, cause all we have is a field and field goals. We have no scoreboard, we have no water on the field, we have no irrigation on any of the fields for that matter. Um, no bleachers, scoreboard concessions, so there's a lot that can do now, if you wanna put it in the budget and build me a field, I'll say thank you.
Well, I think that needs to be looked at, because it's, it's the only county middle school, and we don't have, you know, Westwood Middle has their field.
Chained up behind the stadium.
I mean, for what it's worth, if we had lights, we could probably play games back there, cause we do play middle school on some fields, away games that don't have bleachers.
They don't have bleachers, they don't have fields around them, they, they got lights, and they got lines.
Whenever I do this, from what I'm hearing, let's do an alternate, and add in, uh, the, the lights for, for the middle school practice field, cause that's what it is. Uh, and, and I will put it on as an alternate, so that we have a process with it.
And do, put golf in there too.
Come up here.
I'm, I'm for all of it.
I mean, we could.
Hey.
And it wouldn't need even be a lot of lights.
I mean, to see what it's cost, anyway.
But our, our football price for at the high school, um, you know, two, two or three lights on one side would be beneficial for them. Uh, kinda same situation with soccer, except for us practice, when our teams are playing late in the season for football, by five o'clock, they have to be doing practice, can't see anything.
Right.
Uh, you know, so if you're adding an alternate, I would, I would like to ask that y'all look into at least maybe two sets of lights, or three sets of lights for football practice field, at least if we can just do half the field lighting up, it gives them enough area to practice later in the evening.
Is that what y'all would like for me to also put on as an alternate?
Total, I think a total package, a total package idea, and then definitely this.
Well, this is.
I'd take the, I'd take the practice field at the high school, maybe put it off separate, and maybe on a Wednesday.
Well, that's what I was talking about for the, the middle school and also the high school, is have an alternate for middles, or the middle school practice field, uh, alternate for the high school practice field, and I'm gonna ask you, do you want me to put it on as it's fully lit as a football field? Because they're gonna ask, do you want it as a football field or a practice facility?
Well, what we're doing now, we're not saying we're gonna fund it, I'm just saying that we need the price, and if you're gonna, we're gonna, we need the price of a lighted football field. At middle school.
Especially with Kyle, I, I agree with Kyle, cause it, that was eventually, it was made for a, for a field, and it, and, and you're, and you've got two, potentially two sports that could be played on that field.
Okay, I, I'm asking you, okay, go to the middle school. When I ask them to give me a price, there's a difference in lighting for a practice football field compared to lighting for a official football field. There's gonna be a difference in those two.
Not much, not much.
You have to light it or not.
Not, well, if you got, if you got.
Okay, I might be wrong in saying that, y'all tell me what you want, I, I, I'll, I'll go with it.
I mean, why would you spend money on something that's not?
I agree, I think it's for a lighted football field.
Yeah, if we're gonna light it, it needs to be lighted for the football field to use for the future, anyway.
Lit for a football field.
Yeah.
Yep, I, they might have those.
All right, now, now, you can, you can leave.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm talking about the high school practice field, is a full football field or, or a practice field?
I didn't know there was difference in, in amounts.
There might not be, I don't know, I'm asking, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It wouldn't need to be like, you don't wanna be old, and still kinda hogging up this anyway.
You could probably get away with half. Lights on one half of the field.
It's not a regulation size, but you want it lit like it is a football field in the size that you have. I'm asking, cause I need to know what to tell them whenever I, I get a bid.
That's all when it's going to be a practice field.
That, the, the easement over there on that side over there is something that we may have to check on too, with the, the, uh, landfill. When you, when you go to putting, when you go to putting lights over there in poles that close to that fence.
To be honest, we, I think they're just talking about, you know, maybe just like a couple of poles, maybe two poles on one side of the field.
Okay, so we're not talking about full lighting at, at the high school?
No, not for the practice at the high school.
I, I don't think we can, I don't think it's a matter of.
If that was, if that was available, then we just need to put the football field over there, if that was.
But I, but I don't think, Robert, we can get within that, I don't think, I'm not sure.
Well, there's about fifty foot from the sideline to that, so there shouldn't be any setbacks.
Okay, I know which way to go with it.
I don't think, I don't think that's what we're talking about anyway, I think we're talking about two poles on one.
Yeah, we're talking about fully, or, or less, fuller.
Okay, all right, any other questions on LED lighting? I, I know what direction to go with, with it, so. Okay. Alright, any other questions on LED lighting? I, I know what direction to go with, with it, so.
Good.
We're moving on. Next up is. C H S gym bleachers. Um. No funding has yet been talked about where funding and, and what do we want to do with the bleachers? Um, ultimately, four or five years ago, when, when we looked at changing them out, there was a big uproar of liking the bleachers that are there. I will tell you that the other day, we had a, um, a baseball booster fundraiser and, and one of the people came up to me and said, I see that the, the bleachers are on the agenda again. And I said, yes. They said, please let us keep our bleachers that we have. I was like, I'm not, I'm not over that, uh, but that's where we are. Y'all tell me what you want to do. I, it doesn't matter with me. We can, we can go back and look at the fabrication of putting in handrails. We can look at changing them completely out. I have a price for both of those things. Uh, budgetary for the, the changing them out, but then I have a price, of course, for handrails, which the bo, the, the board had voted on. Um, this past, I think it's February or March. Um, but, but this is a discussion, it's open up for discussion, what, what are y'all wanting? I know Frida, you had some, some concerns and it, it was.
Well, it's not me, it's not just me, it's the, several people that, several people ca, contact me all the time about those bleachers. And it's not that they don't like the wooden bleachers, they're beautiful. They're dangerous and we know it. We have no handrails. And if somebody falls, we're just setting ourselves up for a lawsuit, because we know the problem. And we, we allocated money for, uh, trying to help the, the process. And then that was not enough, so it was spent on something else. And, uh, I just think that we've got to address this at some time or other, you know? Whether we're going to keep them and try to refurbish them and make them as safe as possible, or install new ones.
Okay, ju- just, just a quick update. Back, um, what was appropriated using S R funds? It was forty-three thousand ninety-seven dollars and fifty-five cents to cut the aisles out to make them forty-eight inches and then add the handrails. Uh, it was fifty thousand five hundred ten dollars and thirty-seven cents to install the intermediate steps, which came up to a ninety-three thousand six hundred seven thousand ninety-two cents to, to do that. And the board approved to go ahead and move that direction. Whenever bleachers and seats came in and started looking closer into it, they realized that they were going to have to do fabrications to widen the bleacher aisles. And that's whenever that price jumped from forty-three thousand basically, or, yeah, forty-three thousand. And it went up to one hundred six thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars.
Well, we had appropriated ninety-something thousand, so it actually didn't jump from forty-three, it jumped from ninety. We already had ninety allocated.
No, no, no.
We didn't.
Forty-three went from forty-three to a hundred and six.
Right.
That's when the board said.
Right.
But the, the mid steps were still fifty thousand five hundred ten.
Right, right.
So the total was going to be with the, the widening of the aisles and the intermediate steps was going to be a hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred forty-six dollars and forty-two cents.
And then you told us that that still would not be sufficient for OSHA or whatever that is.
That, that would still not meet.
ADA.
Regulation. I didn't say ADA, because there's, it still wouldn't hit ADA, but it also doesn't hit full regulation for a new set of bleachers.
So, and that's the reason the board voted not to, that, because of that issue, because we're spending all that money and it's not going to be in compliance.
Well, they, they weighed, we weighed at this time, a million dollar set of bleachers. A million dollars to change the bleachers. We weighed the fact that there's, I mean, we all know someone who has failed or tripped or whatever on those bleachers. But we, we've not had, the single, I believe you had to dig that up, and there wasn't a single actual recorded report of somebody really following through and pursuing relief or any problems of being hurt on those bleachers, and they've been there for fifty years. Fifty years, and we've spent thirty thousand dollars on them.
And, and a new set of bleachers, whenever bleachers and seats came in and, because he, he knew, I didn't like what happened. And I asked him, I said, you need to explain this to my board, I don't need to. And he came in, uh, Doug Bailey, and he explained to you what, what happened, and he also brought a budgetary number for a new set of bleachers.
I was an advocate for, for the handrails, for the, the half steps. And then when they come back and was going to have to widen them, we was like, oh, well, that's good. Well, then we heard the price and it was like.
Yeah, it's, it's a nine zero vote to do it.
So, so you're saying we just need to leave those bleachers like they are and go move on?
Oh, I'm not telling you. No, I'm not saying that either.
Well, I mean, we've got to find a solution, seems to me like, because there, there are people that go to those basketball games that cannot get above the second or third row. And they're hanging on to each other.
And I thought about this, what about the, the, instead of going at, what, what drum that calls to just go astronomical was having to cut the, the benches and put the handrails right up the center. What if the handrails were on one side?
That's what I'd ask before.
You can't get in and out of the, the, the lane.
Yeah, they, they've got to be in the center of it.
You, you can't get into the.
They don't have, they don't have to, um.
You can't get into the road to sit down.
Every one of them, but every one of them that we've seen installed in Macnevin everywhere, everywhere, before you can fold it up, you have to turn them.
Right.
Yeah.
You have to turn them to throw them away, and they, they kind of moved. They all just moved and twisted. I'm not saying it's like a gate where somebody has to get in, but.
But, but if you turn it, you're, you're not able to get into the aisle. Then you turn it the other way, you can't get into the, it, it's not.
I've seen one, I've seen them on one, I don't know how they're not, but I've seen them on one side.
And everybody would have to get between them and, and go right into the aisle.
And, and could we just do the first four or five seat just some way or another where people can act? Because nobody sits at that top unless it's the kids that run up there, because, you know, and it's, it's, it's not fair to, to the community that really supports our sports.
Tell me what you want.
I, I agree with Brett, you know, with, with Frida, because I, I've heard a lot too. I mean, I agree with you. I mean, I hear it a lot. Uh, but it's, it's an issue.
Maybe we can come up with some kind of solution, uh, maybe one section or something, I don't know.
What I was told is, once she started on one part, you have to have a plan to start to do the rest.
Well, see, I thought we'd already started it.
That's what I was told, okay?
I know, but I thought we'd already started it with.
Be fully ADA and fully compliant, never, period. You can buy a brand new set of bleachers right now, and next year, there will be another compliance issue that those won't even be in compliance. All you can do is your due diligence to do the best you can to mitigate as much safety issues and hazards as you possibly can.
Okay, what, what they told me is, once we start with the rails, we can go halfway up, we could just do one, one set of rails. We, however we want to do it, but we had to have a plan to finish those rails for those aisles. That doesn't mean everything, that's what we were taught. Now, if we, if, hey, if y'all tell me to, to tell them, we want only five and we just want the middle set, I'm going to go to them, ask them to do it.
Well, we're hitting, we're getting into where the board attorney also needs to give us a little bit of guidance of liability.
Right, right.
As part of this discussion of what do we do about these bleachers?
Right.
What, what is our, you know, if we're showing a due diligence to try to mitigate as much risk to people without.
Yeah.
Busting banks, then maybe he's like, hey, you're on the right path. Do what you can, because you're at least trying to do something.
Have we talked to Telemah, and asked them what they did? Because, I mean, they replaced theirs.
I don't even know what their bleachers are. I, I've never been in their gym.
You get out more, can you?
Yeah.
I'm doing good.
They replaced theirs and they've got.
Yeah, they, they're similar.
Yeah.
The gym's similar with the boot, booters that go, uh, I guess my, my thinking is, you know, we, you were told that, uh, once we start doing something to them, that we've got to have a plan to finish it out. Well, we started doing something when we approved those side rails on the end of the bleachers, so we've already started the process.
We just got to, we just got to continue on. I mean, the plan we had of, even when it come to widening the steps, I mean, hey, let's do it. Let's make it happen.
So we've got to have some kind of plan.
Three years ago.
Back of a astronomical drum, and it was like, wait a minute, they're either trying to price gouge or.
Possibly. Four, four or five years ago, I think it was twenty-twenty, the, the motors were going out on the parking lot side of the gym. The, the motors were not pulling it in out. We had to do every, go and take the, the lift to, to actually tie to them and pull them out by hand, basically. You, you, so we had to do something to get that fixed. That was when we brought it to the board on replacing the bleachers, because we were getting ready to have to put motors on that side. The other things that, when they came and checked them, the, the railing was a must. They, they gave me a little checklist. That was a must, had to be changed. Because, because of what they were in danger. Uh, so we changed all those out and the motors, and it was around thirty-four thousand, I think it was. Um, so we took care of those. Whenever we started talking about actually putting handrails, they said, when she started the handrails, you're supposed to go all the way with the handrails. Just like we wouldn't have done just half of the, the side rails, no, we did all of them. So that's where we are.
We were good with that. We were good with that, and it was approved to do it for ninety-seven thousand dollars.
And, and we were moving forward.
Then they came back and wanted an additional hundred.
Absolutely.
And we said.
And the board said no. And I'm not disagreeing with the board, what y'all said, what y'all did.
If we could get the same thing we had approved to begin with.
Well, I think one reason the board, I think the one reason the board said no is because we were told the money had to be used immediately. And, uh, uh, that S R money.
We had time to use the money. We, we still had time at that time to do the money. I don't remember that being discussed.
And, uh, I, I go back on your minutes.
Yeah, if we didn't use it.
We had to use it by a certain time.
It does have to be used by a certain time, but if we continued, we would be still okay, because we had the time to get it done. But if we didn't use it for that, then we had to hurry up and move it to something else that we could use it, and we went ahead and did H V A C, as it costs actually. But I, I'm fine with.
Because I think I made the comment that we've not spent as much money on those whole bleachers than we probably have on you. And they're over.
Robert, there's no telling what you said, but, um, what do y'all want me to do with the bleachers? I'm going to tell you, the newer bleachers, it's going to be like the top. If we did new bleachers, similar new, uh, middle school or Raider Academy, they break. It's not that they're bad, they, they, it's plastic. There is still a chance that they will run in and get caulked out of it. Uh, Mister Parsley knows what I'm talking about. Uh, there's still some problems that's going to come in, but you would be ADA compliant. You would be compliant with all regulations with the bleachers assembly, but that's, that's the change to a brand new set. And, and y'all, a lot of our people like the bleachers that we have, um, but that doesn't, I mean, we've got to decide what direction do we want to go? And you can tell me which way, if you want me to say five rows, ten rows, hey, I'll go that direction. It doesn't bother me.
I think it goes back to what was discussed at the school board meeting. We were, uh, I, I was of the understanding, and the reason I voted not to do it, I voted with y'all not to do it, because they said that we would not be in compliance and that once we start the process, that we're, you know, we've got to be in compliance and, and, uh, I mean, is that still true, that once we, if we try to?
No, it's not as far as meeting ADA compliance, but it is as far as a half-done task. You can't put handrails and half-steps on four lines without having a plan to get all the way to the top of it.
On every rail.
I understand, I, I understood that at the meeting, but I understood the reason we didn't vote, because it still didn't solve the problem. That we would still be liable if someone failed, and that's, that's the reason.
I thought that y'all voted no, because the price went up so much.
Somebody can fall there, they'd still be held liable.
But you're in compliance with building codes.
We are right now, because we are.
And that's, and, and that's what I'm saying. Once we started, we're not grandfathered anymore, and that we, we wouldn't be in compliance, so we were going to be worse off. You know, in my opinion, because we knew, you know.
Have we got a recent price on a set of new ones?
Yes.
What is it?
Just for the bleachers themselves is, now this is budgetary type numbers, seven hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred ninety dollars. That does not include removal of the old ones as well.
And that was two years ago, right?
No, this is May eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Two, uh, four years ago, I had a price of four hundred thousand for both sides together.
And that's, that's the price that you gave us, that's for both sides, right?
This would be for both sides, yes.
Obviously, yeah. Alright. I, I think we ought to go forward with the new set myself and just, and be done with this.
And you lose, I think it was two or three hundred seats capacity.
Okay.
We don't fill those two or three hundred seats up anyway.
I, I don't think so. You're thinking of if we put in handrails and we widen the aisles. If we put in.
No, the new bleachers did not have near the capacity.
I would have to check his seat. I'd have to check his seat.
He might remember.
Come on up here.
Or remember what the capacity deal was on that.
Um, I have not talked, and I, I can call Coach Dobbs at Ling County. Ling County put in new bleachers, um, that are twenty-four rows up, which is what ours is currently. Um, I do not believe you would lose that much capacity with those new bleachers. Uh, they, they, gyms just like ours, it's three courts. They roll them in and out. Uh, like I said, we counted ours last night, um, ours is twenty-four rows, they were twenty-four rows. So I think you can put the exact same number of seats in there, maybe minus with a railing, minus a few, um, but I think it would be.
I knew they had a number, but I, I didn't.
Because if you go with twenty-four rows, you still have the same number of rows that people are sitting on. Where you're going to change is you're going to go to a forty-eight inch aisle, which is the same thing as putting in.
Cutting the other ones out.
Cutting the other ones out, so you're going to lose the same amount. So I don't think, we're going to lose some, but I don't think we're going to lose any more than if we cut out and put in handrails.
But, but we're gaining ADA compliance.
We're gaining compliance on all, and also, the other big thing we would be is, right now we have fifty-year-old bleachers. We would have brand new bleachers that we would hope would last, well, we would hope as long, but I don't know that they would.
Yeah, the middle schools.
Y'all know what, you know where I'm at. I'm with you.
And talking with some of the coaches and our janitors who pulled that, those bleachers out, um, we still have that issue with the new bleachers, that they won't be as heavy. So you wouldn't have as much issue. When you run these into the wall, they're stuck for a little bit, where at least the new one, you can get in and out if you need to. Um, so I, I know I've been told mo, multiple times that the people who pull those bleachers out would love lighter bleachers.
The, the plastic's going to be lighter than the wood, period.
To make it easier on them. Uh, it, it is, is a tough task to pull those out.
They are more comfortable. If you go, again, if you go to the ones in Telemah.
A little contour to you.
There's a little bit of contour to them, are a little bit more comfortable, and I think taxpayer-wise, I think we don't get to have our, you know, graduations there much, you know? But whenever we do, I think it'd be, I think we'll have the support of the community, uh, if, if we go with a new set.
Please, the, the gym at the high school is used for several things, just like all of our gyms, so they, they are used. They're, they're a very much used commodity.
I love those wooden bleachers. I mean, I do. But, but it just seems like there's no other answer.
And I, I, and I can call Ling County and find out how many seats they lost. I mean, they would know, they just replaced them a year or two.
At, at the end of the day, we're down to risk, liability, assessment, and spending taxpayer money, money. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I, and, and there's more, more people here to send a recommendation back. I'm at working on these and doing the best we can to mitigate as much risk as we can, because we've been exactly zero and clear on risk in, for fifty years. And you'll never get another set of bleachers that are built like these and are as strong as these.
And since I've been A D.
Been here since fifty years.
Yeah, and since I've been A D, we haven't had, like you said, we haven't had, we did have one older lady, uh, who fell and that we had to call the ambulance for. Now.
I mean, I don't want nobody to get hurt, don't get me wrong, but even if we have.
Now, the thing was, she didn't use the stairs. She was trying to come down the bleachers and her foot got stuck. So that wasn't really an issue as ours, because she was not going down the correct way.
If those would have been a brand new set or at Coffin County Middle School and she was doing the same thing, you have the same risk and liability of lawsuit in that aspect. Whether they're brand new and was moved in there or not. Now, I, I.
That's the only injury I've had.
Don't get me wrong, I even voted to put the handrails, half steps, cut the steps, do that.
At a reasonable price.
At a reasonable price.
More reasonable. It still was reasonable. It's, it's more reasonable.
At a reasonable price, but it got way out of reason.
It went.
Real quick, and that might could be something that could be remedied, and we could jump on that right now, you know? But as far as, uh, you know, a recommendation to go back for a new set of new bleachers and replacing on the whole bleacher system, I'm out. I'm not for it.
I'd like, I'd like to put that.
More people in this room.
Yeah, I'd like to put it to the board.
Yeah.
And ask the board what they, cause I, I do, I think there's a, a great big demand for a new set, you know, as far as being ADA compliant and the handrails. We get a lot of, I, I've heard a lot of things about, you know, it's, we, it's, they're outdated.
And that's, that's why you have a board because you, I mean, he's, that's his right, his opportunity, misfides.
And that's also the reason why we have a.
I don't, I don't get the same, I don't get the same contact.
That's the reason why we have the Capitol Rogers.
Well, I think a lot of its convenience too.
Tell me what you want me to do with this.
Not, not necessarily dangerous, but it's con- convenience because I know the people that come to those games, they sit on the first, second rows, they don't even try to go any further. So they don't even, you know, that's where they come and see it. So anyway, that's, I think we can find a solution one way or the other. And, uh, and that's.
And, and the board is the way, is where it needs to be.
Well, it's actually on the agenda for, uh, October. So it, it, it will go to the board on, uh, y'all wanna just leave it there and?
Well, there's really, we, we need some figures. You know, we need something else to look at again. We can't just.
My question's gonna be, what, what do you need on figures?
Well, I guess you've already told us the cost of replacing them. And then you could, and refresh us again on what, uh, cause maybe we didn't understand it correctly.
Basically, two options presented to the board. One option of full replacement and one option of kicking back up and see if we can get a more reasonable number on at least doing what we approved to do the last.
And the only reason that I voted not to do that is because I was afraid that if, that we would be in more, uh, we would be more liable by trying to fix them and not have it ADA compliance. And then they really, you know, somebody gets hurt, they could really say, well, you didn't do your job and, and you started it and you didn't make it ADA.
At least you tried, yeah.
But, uh, but I was of the impression that it didn't matter. We were trying, that we had to have it that way if we ever started.
Due diligence is a big word.
Okay.
Due diligence.
What, what I have right now is, I, I've got the price of what it costs to change out the, and add handrails and widen the, the rails for the aisles. I've already got that price because that's what we voted, or the board voted on. And I have a budgetary number on what it's gonna cost to put in a new set of bleachers. What other cost number are you wanting?
I think the one that you already had for the, working on the current bleachers.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's trying to find possibly a different number than that. Because I think that's what it was, was that tremendous job. How do you, how do you forget that? And how do you decide that all of a sudden, you gave me a price to widen these steps, but then all of a sudden you come back and go, well, there's more steps than I thought. So it's gonna cost more.
It was actually the fabrication underneath that is reasonable.
And what was so sad, that was not taxpayer-funded. I mean, it was technically, but it wasn't local funds. It was Essor funds that was gonna pay for that. And everybody was so happy over it. And then, you know, y'all came back and said that it's gonna cost more and we still wouldn't be in compliance.
Like I said, I brought the guy out because I didn't want to tell you.
So.
I mean, I don't, really, I didn't like it either. I was not a bit happy. And he knew that I wasn't. That's the reason why I said, you need to be at my board meeting. And you need to explain this because I don't agree with it. That's all I could do. So, but I, I don't know what other number to work on to get for you.
So, so right.
Ask them the same thing you gave them that's gone.
Okay, there are other bits.
And ask them if you rethought that extremely high price that you gave us.
So we've got, we've got seven hundred eleven thousand to replace, to replace them.
Seven hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred ninety and sixty-two cents. And that's not including removal.
Okay.
How much did they go charge to remove?
I, I've asked four years ago and it was around thirty thousand dollars to remove the old ones, four years ago, with a different company at that time. Now, understand, you have different companies, but you also have different qualities.
Taking out a whole lot of.
You get what I'm saying?
I mean, we.
There's a lot of dangers there to take out.
But I still don't think you, I don't think you'll get them bleachers out of that building for thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, I don't either. I, I don't either.
Might, maybe aside.
It, it's, it's a dangerous job taking those bleachers out of that gym. They, y'all, we have some massive bleachers at our high school. They're nice. They're, they're, they're really large. And whenever you start taking things apart, it gets dangerous.
Well, I mean, probably, and too, they're gonna mess up the floor, probably.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not.
When you just take them out one board at a time?
Okay, I, I, I'm not a specialist on that. I, I couldn't tell you how they're gonna take them out. I would assume they'd start taking them apart.
One thing's for sure, you gotta take them out on an eight-foot door.
Yeah.
And you can't knock the wall down.
They'd put dumpster open doors and they'd be throwing it in, is what they do.
That's exactly right. You know, you gotta set of doors if you gotta go out. You can't take a wall down so many.
Exactly.
Process of elimination. That's the only way, that's the only way they're gonna come out.
A lot of nuts and bolts and screws and pieces.
And so what was the price of what they gave us the last time for renovating them?
To, to change the, okay, just to cut the aisles and put in the handrails was one hundred six thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and five cents. One zero six nine three six point zero five.
And I don't think the price was the issue at the board meeting.
I thought it was.
Well, I mean, it was a surprise, but what I'm saying, if that fixed it, that wasn't the, the issue. Cause we had most of it, you know, funded.
And that was just the aisles widening. Then to install the intermediate steps, which breaks it up, was another fifty thousand, five hundred ten dollars and thirty-seven cents. Five zero five one zero point three seven.
But what I'm saying is, that was the reason I voted not to do it. It's because we said it wouldn't do any good because we weren't in compliance.
I, I thought the board voted that way because the price change was extra-gonomic.
No, not, I didn't. I didn't.
I didn't. I mean, that's what I thought it was.
I didn't because, I mean, if that would fix the problem, that's a no-brainer. But it wasn't fixing the problem.
Can you do this? Can, when you get a price for the new ones, price for the new ones, price that it costs to remove it and how long it's gonna take? You know, cause it, you're more likely, you're gonna have to do it on, during the spring or the summer break.
It'd have to be during the summer break.
Yeah. So, but, you know, how long would it take? I mean, ask, you know, if, if you could ask how long it would take to do that.
Hey, I can't remember. They, they told me it's, it was two or three months.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's, that's an important piece of information there too, how long it's gonna take.
Yes, and, I mean, it is, but if, if you're doing it during the summer, then you have to work over into, I mean, as long as you're not hitting basketball, volleyball.
And how much, how much leadway are they gonna have to have? Too, you know, you're not, we all know about.
Oh, it's not gonna be an overnight thing, no.
Oh, no. I'm talking about how much ahead of time, you know? It, can they, could they, would that even be possible to do it during a spring break? Do they already, you know, do they already have, uh, their schedule already booked up? They may be booked up for two years. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely.
So, I mean, those, those are all things that we need, we need to know as a board that could contribute to a whole lot of information right there, you know? Cause if it's gonna be two years, cause our, our, our window of, of being able to get them in is gonna be pretty much cut down to two months out of a year.
Oh, it's gonna be summertime. I mean, and they understand that we would have to.
Exactly.
And it might be, if we got it done right now, that we couldn't get it done this next summer, it might have to be the following summer.
That's what I'm saying.
Uh, it, it's a monstrous job. It's not a small job. This is a big job.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We'd like to know, yeah, I, I would, as a board, would like to know, it may help make a decision of, you know, if it's gonna be three years from now, is it gonna be, even the money may change in that length of time. We may have more money or we may have less. There's a whole lot of.
I, I have no problem contacting them to see. I will tell you that.
I appreciate that.
I know it's on the agenda for the October meeting. Next week is fall break and I'm out of town. So if I can't get the, the price today or tomorrow, or that Monday, then it's, I, I won't have it.
So right now, we've got two options. Seven hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred ninety dollars to replace them.
Okay.
And the second.
Budgetary number.
Yeah. And the second option is total of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars.
No, one hundred fifty-seven.
Oh, that's even better. That is wrong. So a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four forty-six.
And that was the price back in May of last?
To, uh, renovate them or try to do what we can to make them safe.
Start the aisles.
And, uh, so the only issue there would be whether or not we're, we're liable if somebody falls and we do that. And I was of the understanding that if we spent that money and renovated the bleachers, we would still be liable because we were not in compliance. And that's what I'm trying to get across. That's why.
You made a comment the other day that you're exactly right. It doesn't matter if we change them or not change them. We're gonna be liable. The, the school system's liable for anybody that falls.
But I mean liable for not, not starting the process and making them compliant. I know we're liable any, on anything, but at least we can say we're, you know, we're compliant. We did everything we could. And what I was understanding at that board meeting, that that would not cover us. That if we spent one fifty-seven, four forty-six, that we're still not covered.
It'll, it'll make you better. I mean, you're showing due diligence. Everything you do, even if you paint the steps in a brighter color, that is making an attempt to mitigate risk.
Right.
And to try to be as due diligent as you can to save.
And, and as long as, that we could prove that we didn't have the funds to do, to make it compliant, then we'd be okay. Is that correct? What I understood.
I'm not gonna answer that one. That's, that's a question for a lawyer.
That's what I, that's what I understood.
So, so far today in this agenda, getting to these bleachers, we've pretty much burned up two million dollars before we even get to that, close to it.
Oh, uh, yes. No, wait, wait. Yeah, it'd probably be two million dollars.
Be two million dollars before we even get to this point. And then we're talking about it. You know, I'm, I'm, thirty thousand dollars to tear them out. I'm gonna watch it for that.
I don't, once again, that was four years ago with a different company. I, I don't know that, I don't know what the price would be.
People were hungry a little bit.
Things have gone up quite a bit since four years ago. That was before COVID.
So, you know, I mean, we're, we're talking about before we get out of here today, I imagine we're fixing to talk about three and a half, four million dollars worth of stuff. By the time we get out of here.
And Russell said, we had almost a hundred thousand to take care of it, but we didn't use it. We used it for air conditioning, which was part of the maintenance for our school system anyway. We were gonna have to spend that anyway. Anyway.
We were gonna have to come up with the money to replace them, one way or the other. This way we use, the money was not lost.
Right.
So y'all are good with the two.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that leaves, it gives us an option, two options. Good, newer, newer use.
Well, third option's not doing anything. But we got three options.
Your option's doing nothing. You're exactly right. Okay, we're, any other questions on bleachers? Or we're gonna move on to the high school doors, walls, and structures?
I didn't wanna interrupt you, but does anybody have anything they wanted to say about Paul that's your school?
Paul, appear. No.
No, I was talking about the, the one we just got done. The bleachers. Anybody, anything? Good, okay. Well.
Okay.
Good day.
Okay, moving on to the high school. This is the ninety, nineteen seventy-five building, uh, the, the main building that was built first. Um, the, the building was built as a open classroom concept, uh, has been that way ever since. Uh, that means there are doors not there. Uh, many of the walls are very, very limited. They're not concrete. It's, it's a metal that is a partition, if you wanna call it. They are, they are there, uh, but there are several that are missing doors. And I went through and actually counted, uh, the doors to, to kinda have a, a general idea to be able to share with you. Uh, I think all three of you have been through the, the high school many times. The way it's set up is you have a hallway. Then you go into, through a opening to the first classroom, but then you go through a second opening to a second classroom. Um, I did, I counted it two ways. Well, actually, I counted the doors, putting doors in the openings going into the first classroom. Cause if you had a door there, then in some ways you are protected, the second one automatically. Does that make sense? So I counted that as a must-have. And I counted the second one as, it'd be really good if it had a door as well. You can't see what I'm talking about. The must-have doors that is needed, the openings, is nineteen doors, no, or nineteen openings. The second set is ten openings. Now, I'm, I, I went through it one morning before everybody got there and just looked at it. And, and if I missed one, I apologize, but it's pretty much nineteen that is almost a must-need and ten that is a possibly could, they would like to have. Some of those rooms going into that first room out of the hallway has two openings for some reason. One on each end of it. I don't know why one of those couldn't be just walled off. So you only have one opening going into the classroom. You see what I'm saying? There was four of those openings that I felt like if it was allowable, that would be, well, could be walled off. So total of, basically, if you wanna say thirty doors, thirty openings, they would need to be closed off. Now, going from there to do doors in the, that, that section, I told you that there's partitions between rooms that are, are thin metal partitions, about three inches is what they are. And they're not all connected to a beam that is a support beam. So to do this, it's gonna require engineering to come in to make sure that we can structurally put something that will hold the doors in the frames. Otherwise, you know, the old saying, a fence is only as good as the post. It's that top saddle. Uh, or the, the gate's only as good as the post. Uh, if you don't have something to hold it, it's not gonna last. So we, we'll have to have engineers to come in to, to, to identify how we can structure it up so that it would hold. Uh, then you also have to bring in, and, and engineers should be able to figure this out with the fire marshal, cause you have to have fire marshal approval with the new setup because you're changing the egress. And you have sprinkler system throughout the entire old part of the building. So if you put a door there, no longer is that sprinkler gonna be able to take care of both sides because it's walled off on one side and you don't have it on the other side. So you might end up having to add sprinklers on the other side of the door. If that makes sense. So there's a, this, this is not a simple task. Can it be done? I think it can, but that's engineers, uh, engineer's gonna have to come up with that. Um, I can tell you that I have bought doors to replace within our schools and just the door and the hardware for a good, solid door with this setup, with hinges, the closure, the handle, the side light, the glass, everything there. You're looking at around a little over twenty-four hundred dollars apiece. Just for the, that part. That's not including your structuring to what it connects to or anything like, like that. But it's, there's a lot to this if we wanna go this direction. I think is a, a need in the sense, there are, back before I came up here, Mr. Pettigo was in part with, uh, and I don't know who all did it, putting in glass doors and partitions at the entrance of each, each subject area. Is that what we would, department, thank you, department. So those are there and they were put there for safety. So that if there was ever a problem, teacher could go out there and lock it. Uh, since that happened, which was probably six, seven, eight years ago, around that area, I don't know exactly, but, but let's say six, seven years ago. There's been a lot happened with school shootings since then. And we know that there's new safety things that have to be taken in place to make it more usable, I guess you could call it. Because a teacher, if there's a shooting going on, a teacher having the time to run out of their classroom, go up here, lock that door, go back and hide. And while they're trying to lock it, their hands are doing this. It, it just happens. They, they can't do it. So there is a possibility that if we didn't wanna go with the doors, something might, would be able to be put in, like a card reader at those doors. So that wherever, and the reason why they had to stay unlocked is students have to leave to go to the restroom. They have to get back in. So you can't lock the doors. You see where I'm going there? And it's also one of those things. Fire marshal has to approve it. So this would actually have to go to the, the fire marshal, uh, to, to, to get their approval. But if we put in card readers for those doors and attached it basically to a student pass, so that when. so that when the student goes and gets the pass, go to the bathroom, they will have a card reader to go back in and let's say that they lose it. Card readers, you can zap it like that and make a new one and change the complete thing. So, what I am giving you is a couple of scenarios that really one of these things needs to happen to make our high school more safe than it is, and more secure on the inside than it is right now. Uh, one is, one is gonna be a whole lot more expensive than the other one. Uh, we are putting in phase two, we are looking at putting the laminate on those departmental glass doors. So, that is gonna be added anyway, and we may even put uh graphics up there, I'm not sure yet. But that's gonna make it so that you can't shoot and, and shatter those doors to get into that way. So, it's a lot for us to think about, it's what direction do we wanna go, because it's, it's, it's just a lot of money, i- i- it's a lot of money, but also it's a lot of things about safety.
I'm not trying to be ugly here or nothing, is this something we probably need to be talking about on camera?
Actually, this part right here, I think we're okay. Uh, uh, it, it's kind of on that line of not, but I, I think we're, I think we're still okay.
Better to ask before than after.
No, no, trust me, I thought about it before, because I'm on the safety.
Some of the things he's talking about, I mean, it's been over and over and over reiterated, but you know, more, more, more doors and more places or fewer.
I, I mean, we, we have the safety set up.
I mean, I, I get it, I mean.
And that is a bold decision.
Lot of the places you have to go through a classroom to get to the second classroom.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I know, that's, that's been an issue since I was there, a long time ago.
And also it's a, it's a disruption to the, the class, I mean, it's an open room classroom, you, the voices and the sound's gonna travel. But one of the methods might be to put doors in and leave the top open so that you can, can sprinkle it and not have to change the sprinkling. I'm not, I'm not saying, I know the answer right off, I'm, I'm just giving you some ideas.
Pretty wet pit hall for the back one, I mean, I'm just.
Create that a hallway.
Not big enough?
You, you just be.
Not big enough?
It's a lot, creates a lot more.
You, you're gonna create a smaller classroom for everybody.
More structured.
Shielded territory where.
But it, I'm, I wasn't thinking in terms of safety, I'm just thinking in terms of that, that's really a difficult situation when you've got two, two classrooms open to each other and pa- and kids having to travel through one to the other and go through the class, you know, I, I mean, I've thought of that a long time, if it was a hall.
Could you, I think you could, you're gonna, you're gonna make your classroom smaller, you are gonna have to still do something with your, your sprinkling system. Uh, because you gotta sprinkle that hall now too.
Right.
Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of different things that's gonna come into play there.
And also too, on this card reader thing, uh, I don't know, of course, when it comes to that, when we get to that point, that would be discussed and decided what to do, but you know, in that one instance of shooting, that child left the classroom and could not get back in and those kids were saved because that child saw that he had, he brought a gun back with him. If he had a card reader, he could have just walked right in there.
Yes, he could.
And so, I mean, that's just some things to think about.
Well, you gotta think of so many other things too, because if that kid would have been out there with that card going to the bathroom and the shooter come down the hall, shot him, got that card, come open that door, then they were all sitting there.
There's, there's a lot of what it is there.
So, you're, you're six and one half dozen of them. So, the ultimate thing though is kinda like these bleachers, just building these schools, set up, laid out right, set up just right.
You know, when you're talking about.
This way you wanna go, the direction.
When you're talking about the frames and stuff, what, we've got gates, you know, that could be solid, that just lock in place, you slide them.
Now, Paul really likes that.
I'm sorry.
I said, you know, maybe whenever we talk with the engineer, structural people or whatever, there may be other options besides just a regular door, could be a sliding solid gate that locks, you know, that yeah, there's different, there, you know, we, and, you know, it doesn't have to be a, or, you know, there's other options, I would think, for a door.
I, I'm not a fan of the, the single door controlling a bigger area of more classrooms and that being the one line of defense or only line of defense. I think it's definitely worth looking into to see what our cost could be with the doors and classrooms.
Because I, I, it's safety, that should be number one.
Okay, now, when we start doing this direction, this is, this is gonna start creating, we have to, because it's not gonna be just me calling and saying, vendor, give me a price on this. This is gonna be going to an engineer and them actually doing a study and figuring out what it's gonna take, so.
And they're gonna charge us for that.
Well, start out.
Exactly, I under, I mean.
Yeah, I'm good with that, just.
I mean, we could start out with what an estimate is, without going that route.
Well.
We could start out with the estimate of the door, with what he said, what door.
Yeah, and then know that you've gotta do the engineering on top of that, but we also do have an engineering firm that is looking at some of our structures, some of our stuff right now and, whoa.
I could call them and, and ask them to start on this process, yeah, absolutely.
You know, and thinking about, um, you know, needs with, with doors, you know, we, we think about safety first and foremost. Uh, if kids are not safe, if they don't feel safe, uh, the likelihood of them reaching their maximum potential in the classroom, I think, is minimized. Uh, they, they need to feel safe. I would also say that our teachers need to feel as comfortable as possible. There is one particular example of a department in our building, it, it's a little bit unique. I think about our foreign language department now, we've got four or five departments that are s- set up the way we've been discussing. But in the foreign language department, we have.
I, I want you to be careful of going into specifics.
Okay.
If you understand what I'm saying, I just think we need to be.
Okay, um, I, I'll put it like this, we, um, what I'm getting at is we have lots of noise traveling from one room to another due to the close proximity of rooms to one another without doors. That, that's the point I wanna make here in one partic- that particular department. Um, and it, it, you know.
Give them a classroom, give them some privacy.
Right, um, and again, four rooms right there, I, I just, you know, it, it's it's foreign language too, so that you've got so much speaking, it, it makes it difficult.
Right.
Um, that, that's the foremost example, I think, where you have disruption due to noise level. And so, I feel like that really needs to be considered as the, as this safety issue is discussed as well. That's the point I wanted to make.
Okay.
And I, I'd, I would really appreciate if we could strongly consider a door for every classroom.
Okay, probably this would need to go before the board, it, it can't get on the October meeting, but it'd be the November one. And basically it's to go into a discussion with Paul on, on this process and, and we can move forward that direction if the, the board decides to, to, to go into that with them, because it, it's a completely different thing than the Hickerson and, uh, East Coffee setup.
And, and if the board is good with that, the, the discussion of plans of how and what should probably remain within the safety committee.
It, it's gonna start getting more into the safety committee, yes.
I agree.
I agree, there's doors, they need their doors no matter what.
I will, I will have it on the November agenda, okay? Okay, and that, that concludes all the things I have on the agenda, um, so I, I, I'm ready for us to adjourn and move on. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Horace.
Thank you.